That's my, my opinion.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome whoever's in class. To the August 5th, 2025, Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. The first, uh, this is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Pam Trees, Commissioners Jerry Willie and Commissioner Jason Snyder. First item on the agenda is formal agenda item discussion. Does anyone have any questions on what is on today's formal agenda for the Housing Authority Board of Directors or the regular business meeting?
No.
Okay. Just a brief announcement about the auditorium. So overnight, a water heater had broke and fortunately, due to our great facilities team as well as our ITS team, we are up and going. There are fans running in the back restroom area and we can turn them down if they become too noisy, but just want to appreciate staff working very hard to get the auditorium up and running.
What did you say broke?
Oh, a water heater broke.
Okay. Is, are the, uh, is the bathroom still available on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. And you can still use that, uh, that doorway if you need.
Yeah. Next is, uh, Leadership and Board Communication. I think we should start with Leadership Communication first today. Mr. Shandley, would you like to start us off?
I can do that. Good morning. Um, I'm gonna start with the Quarterly Investment Report in your packet. We provided this Quarterly Investment Report to the Board covering CWS's Treasury Investments during April 1 through June 30th of 2025. We are open to, um, finding a little bit easier way for the Board to digest this information. When I looked at it, there's a lot of information and attachments. So maybe something we can talk about in the future is how to consolidate it and make sure you see the key points. But we'll reserve that for future discussion. It's all there. Um, it's just a lot for the Board to parse through.
A directory of acronyms would be good.
And okay, we will note that as well.
I found one of them, but I think there's a couple of them there and I couldn't understand it. But anyway.
Yeah.
A lot of information in it. It's a good report.
It's a lot. Great. And Kathy Leader is here to field any, I'll say any questions difficult. Direct them all her way. So thank you Kathy for coming this morning. The purpose of the report is to document compliance with the investment policy by achieving equal or better than market performance as compared to benchmark data. Happy to say we are compliant in our returns and we continue to remain above benchmark data. So with that, I will pause and ask if there are any questions on the report and information as provided.
I didn't have any. Okay.
Wonderful. It's good information. It's good to know we're investing wisely and by policy. So, yeah.
Yeah. Good. Great.
Yeah, I thought the document did a good job of summarizing the background very well and just the key questions for demonstrating.
Good. Okay.
Um, I just wanted to.
The only question I have is beyond it being in a memo as part of our packet, I'm assuming that it is also posted on the CWS website somewhere related to financial matters. Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
Great. Um, as far as calendar, this Wednesday I'll be attending the Washington County Leadership Meeting again. This will be my second time. I've joined. I really appreciate, uh, being there, the communication and collaboration with Ms. Angie, uh, City Managers and other special district leaders.
Now I recognize the title. It was like Washington County Leadership Meeting. Oh, okay. The City Managers Meeting. Got it. Thank you.
And then one that is upcoming, and I don't remember, but at, at the Chair's request, there is a Beaverton, I believe it's the Beaverton Special Services District Meeting, which includes, um, TBWD, um, TVVAP and our.
The Service District Managers Meeting.
Yes. Thank you. Um, that I have, um, with the help of Ann reached out and I'm attending that. The next one, I believe it's in St. Pepper. So appreciate that, um, advice and we've got it on the books.
Well, good job. It's only August.
Yeah.
You've, you dove in, uh, headfirst into it, to it all. So thank you.
Me. Thanks.
Alex or Ms. Angie, which of you would like to go first?
Okay. Chair Commissioners, good morning. Um, week before last, since we've had frequent meetings, myself and six councilors from our office attended the Oregon County Council's Association, you know, meeting in Lincoln City. Um, it was a great opportunity, a lot of healthy discussion, especially concerning issues surrounding the federal funding landscape, um, and then the other issues of shared county concern. We continue to collaborate and share information between our counties if it becomes applicable and try to crowdsource and work through some of these issues that are affecting all of us equally across the state. After receiving your Board's guidance with the new Access and Opportunity Resolution, Aman McMahon, an attorney from our office, and Alicia Sojourner from our Access and Opportunity Office have been working hard with other members of the county staff to develop language guidance for contracts to ensure they meet the spirit of access and opportunity. Uh, that document's been provided to the county leadership team and contract administrators to begin the process of reviewing and revising a large number of county contracts. And Aman and the team in the County Council's Office continues to work with our, uh, clients across the county to ensure that if they have questions in the contract drafting process, we're available to help them work through those. And it's gonna be quite a bit of work over the next couple of weeks, especially for Aman, Jack LaCiteau and Bomshy Reddy in our office, but they're doing a great job. Last week, I attended, uh, community lunch at the gracious invitation of Mr. Washi Said. Uh, it was a great opportunity to interact and, and, uh, break bread with some of the men, members of our local Washington County interfaith community. And I want to thank Washi for his openness and hospitality. And I do look forward to returning, uh, for a future lunch that they hold. And lastly, uh, we're really excited to welcome next week Mr. David Lewis to our office. He'll be our new litigator within the County Council's Office. I plan to bring Mr. Lewis to next week's work session and introduce him to your Board. With that, that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Board of Commissioners. I'm going to build on the Access and Opportunity Language Guide that, um, Alex, I had mentioned. We have also shared that out with our community-based organizations and partners that we contract with. Part of that purpose was that there's no surprises. Once they start to receive county contracts, what, um, the evolution of language is and how that language anchors to law, uh, civil rights law, ADA law and others. Um, so also appreciate, um, Aman and Alicia's leadership in putting this document, um, together. Uh, feedback from, um, some organizations at this point has been, it's helpful to have a heads up on what's coming. Um, and, uh, more to come because as we continue to get new contracts in, we may have to amend or evolve the current guide. Moving on to the Office of Community Development, they were recently awarded the National Community Development, um, Award, uh, through the Association of Counties, um, for Community and Economic Development Excellence. The Office of Community Development, um, received this award. Um, this is the first, the first award is in the Innovation category for the Just Compassion Safe Parking Tiger, Safe Parking Program in the Tiger locations, which received multi-year funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. The other award is the Affordable Housing category for Northwest Housing Alternatives alongside Senior Housing Project. This project was supported with Home Investment Partnership Programs, Home Funding. Both of these projects have received additional support through the county, their local jurisdiction, the city of Tigerd and others to be successful. These awards recognize specifically the role of federal funds administered effectively and efficiently through the Office of Community Development. Staff will be formally receiving these awards through the group's annual conference next month. Uh, next week, on Thursday, August 14th at 2:00 PM, Multnomah County will test the Wireless Emergency Alert System. Because, uh, the wires, wireless emergency alerts, uh, use cell towers to relay messages to any connected devices, there will be some spillover of alert to cellphone users in Washington County, especially along the county's border with Multnomah County. Recipients of the alert will hear a high pitched tone. Their phone will vibrate twice, um, accompanied by a text message in English and Spanish explaining that the alert is just, um, test. So while this is Multnomah County, just wanted to make note of it because, uh, it will impact some Washington County residents, but not all. And that concludes my update.
Great. Um, I'll just share that I watched the video, uh, that you recommended in your July 23rd or so email following the adoption of the Access and Opportunity Resolution from the Board. Your email to employees had suggested that everyone look at, uh, the video that, uh, Alicia and Grady did. And I thought it was really, really helpful. So I wanted to make sure to compliment you on that. The teams just absolutely running really fast, uh, to keep up with all these requirements, serving our community, uh, with their great public service excellence at the same time. Uh, but you, you and your staff are using great techniques to help ensure that our whole workforce understands the why behind this and the how behind this. So keep going.
Thank you for that. And for members of the public, uh, those videos will be also available, not just on Horizons, which is our internal web, uh, web access for employees, but also on, uh, the county's website. That, that was the first video in, uh, what we plan at this point, a five-part series. We know that long videos lose attention. So making shorter snippets and also, uh, being very open to questions that we continue to receive from community or, um, or employees and helping cater the content to that. Thank you, Chair, for mentioning that.
Uh, has the Board seen the guide?
Yes, that was emailed, um, out to the Board, um, last, last, I will check on when it, but it was emailed out.
Oh, the, the language.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, great. Uh, we'll move on then to Board Communication. Who would like to go first?
I can. Um, last Tuesday, Commissioner Treese and Commissioner Willie and I had a tour of the Marion County Juvenile Facility. That was like an excellent opportunity to see, uh, both the services and facility that are caring for, uh, our youth in our community who need that level of service. That was really good. Friday of last week, I had a follow-up discussion with the Washington County EMS folks and some of our leaders on, on some topics related to the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency. And that was a follow-up initiated, I think by, it was not initiated by me. So I, uh, I answered some questions and helped work through some things, I think there. And just a heads up about that. Yesterday I had a one-on-one with, uh, our Acting Clean Water Services CEO, General Manager, and then a one-on-one with Under Sheriff Cook. Uh, last night was a Region One Act meeting, and I do want to give just a brief amount of content from that meeting, very summary, high level. Uh, they will, received a report out, uh, on the State's Transportation Safety Action Plan. And I'm gonna leave you with just a few high-level things that I think we all should know. So, uh, one, 98% of, uh, fatal and serious injury crashes are in the state of Oregon are caused by human factors and not by, not primarily by road design, et cetera. And, um, that matters because we have really, as a state, not improved in the last five years on any of these metrics because I, I think we would all say, because we're not focused on education and changing human behavior, and that's causing most of the crashes. Uh, the other piece of data that I would give you that is really, uh, striking is that while the number of fatal crashes has remained relatively steady of, uh, or the number of deaths that come from, from a crash has remained relatively steady-ish over the last decade. The number of crashes that involve really serious injury has almost, has increased by four to five times. Um, and there are a lot of reasons for that. There was a lot of discussion about it. I won't get into more of that, but I just want you to have some of those key, key points. I know our county is also working on updating our county transportation safety action plan. So I'm sure there'll be more to come on that in the future. Um, this Thursday night, I've been asked to speak on the Access and Opportunity work at the Washington, East Washington County Democrats Meeting. That's a group I occasionally, uh, am invited to speak at and they reached out and asked if I would just come and speak on, as their, uh, District Representative, come speak on what we did and why. And so I am gonna do that. Uh, Friday, I think there's a Beyond Star Lunch I plan to attend. And then next Monday is a Tuolton City Council Levy Presentation that I do plan to, I don't think I'm speaking there, but I'm gonna at least go and, be present. That's all I got.
Yeah, I think Jason, our, our purpose as Commissioners is to go there and advocate for it. I did it last night.
Yep.
At to the two presentations in North Plains. And so, um, yeah, and it actually invites questions that, um, the staff can't answer. And so, yeah.
I don't, I don't plan to not. I, I, I'm not the presenter necessarily, but I, I do expect or to be asked questions.
You done?
Yeah.
I'll jump in. Um, so as we all know that we wrapped up the fair, uh, at the end of July and it was, uh, a phenomenal event from the standpoint of attendance was nearly 200,000 people. I, I don't know if Leah has put out a report to the entire commission yet.
I haven't seen anything.
Um, she, she gave us a snippet, uh, for the Fair Board, but I think there'll be a much better and more in-depth report coming pretty soon. But it was great. Again, we, uh, the Fair Board provided, uh, pancake breakfast for the kids for the last four days. That's always appreciated. And that's really, really a fun event. Uh, and also the Washington County Livestock puts on their snake feed. And so took the fam to, uh, have a good old steak out in the middle of, um, a pasture. Well, actually it's a fair, but anyway. Also at our first Clean Water Services Audit Committee meeting and it was great. Um, we are, uh, you got a good, a good team there, Rick, uh, on that committee, good representation. And we, of course, selected the chairperson and then the auditor for the CPA firm made a great presentation as well to kind of give us some insights as what's coming. So that was, that was a great first meeting. Aaron Doyle and Maida and I went out to stem some lumber on their invitation and, uh, took a tour of their facility. Um, it's really a much larger facility than what, um, it even looks like going by when you're on the way to Hag Lake. Uh, they are, uh, in the process of making a very significant investment in that, um, in that, um, lumber mill. And it's, um, it's going to be one of the most technologically advanced in the country. So we'll wait and see how that works. Of course, um, I also met with Aaron Wardell and, and the UT team just to see how we're doing on permitting. And, um, it was great, but they, um, they were very happy to have us there and certainly extended the invite if anyone else would like to, um, go out and visit that facility. Yeah. And Jason, as you said, we went to Ryan County for the Juvenile Service Tour. A little jealous of, uh, what a great facility that is. They've been, they, they got a running start on us way back when and they've just been able to add on it. And, um, it's very cool and those people are very nice. I think, um, it, that was a good move on our part.
It's both the facility and the people.
Yeah. People were really, really cool. So, um, so yeah, that, and that was good. I didn't, hadn't planned on attending that, but I'm glad I did. So it was, uh, it was worth the trip.
Yeah, I was really sorry to be gone for that.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, last night, like I said, I was in North Plains, uh, making my kind of for them. It'd been about six or eight months since I was there, probably longer.
Who's giving the presentations?
Uh, last night, the presentation was Lisa on Library and Alroque on, uh, Public Safety. Got a good positive response, I think, back from the council. If you remember, uh, they are, um, without a mayor and their, um, present mayor, what do they call it? Vice.
Their pro temp.
Yeah, uh, was also not there. Uh, and so, uh, but it was in, there was plenty of citizens there, um, talking to the Commissioners or to the councilors about what they thought should be going on. And so it was, it was an active, it was an active meeting. It was good. So it's good that we were there. Tonight I'm going to the Cornelius, uh, National Night Out Event. Also, there's three, I think, tonight. So our Sheriff's Department is very active in the last couple of weeks with all these, uh, National Night Out Events. And so I just want to say thanks to them, uh, for their commitment to that. And we'll see them out there at Cornelius tonight. And then of course tomorrow's Congresswoman Bonamici for the tour of the Hillsborough Recovery Center. And, um, yeah, and then the Beyond Star Lunch on Friday. Lots of stuff going on, but it's good. It was a nice two weeks. Kind of quiet in some regards.
No.
Yours was quiet, just in a different way.
Well, I kept up on email.
Yep.
I can go next. Um, I, I just would like to add to about the Marion County work. One thing that struck me was the, uh, relationship between our staffs and the fact that they are, that they know each other, they work together, they understand models, they, they share philosophies. And that was very meaningful to me, along with the other, the other pieces. It was, it was well worth the time to go to that. Uh, I did have a meeting last week with, uh, a lunch with Senator Lisa Reynolds. Uh, one of the things we talked about was the upcoming special session and transportation. I taught, I sent a note back to Carly and to Erin. It looks like the proposal is going to be, uh, 650 million per bionium. So that's 325 a year, obviously, with a 50, 30, 20 split. And then a 6% gas tax, a point 01 to point 02 stiff and, uh, recalibration for the truckers. I don't know what that means. And there's more to follow, but I. There was a, there was a study, um, that OBI, um, championed, uh, that the trucks were paying more than their fair share in the weight mile tax. So that was, that was what she was referring to with recalibration. Uh, the point is that it's, you know, back there and, uh, it's where I talked with Carly for a little bit about it and just gave her what, what I had heard and she had heard the same thing. She said, it's good just to have the, the validation. I had my one-on-one with, uh, Alroque and, uh, I will be attending the, the, uh, meeting tomorrow with Congresswoman Bonamici. There's council meetings that I was going to be attending, the Tuolton Council Meeting and the Banks. If, if we don't want to have two there, I'm fine not to. But from the library perspective, I thought it was important. And also last night was Anchor. We got the language guide that was presented, uh, the Tanya talked about earlier. There were a lot of questions about that. There were a lot of questions about how that is used in relationship to the community-based organizations. Alicia did a good job of answering the questions around, um, what is the relationship between the community-based organizations and the county? And I, you know, I, I don't know that they really understand that that's a staff level interaction that, 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 that happens there. And the coaching is around the contracts that we will be signing with the CBOs. So, uh, you know, there's fear about how restrictive do we have to be in relation, do our CBOs have to be in relationship to the language? Uh, we, Courtney did a good job of saying, look at the language that we're worried about is the contract that we're putting in place with the CBOs because that's how, that's how it follows from our federal contract to the contract with the CBOs. And I think that the, the opportunity to understand that relationship was important as well as the, the language guide. So, uh, when I sat there and listened to the questions, it was clear to me that it, it's not clear to many people what the relationship is between the CBOs and the county for the services that, that they provide. Uh, we also had a long debrief about the, um, the RNO process, the five weeks, if you will. And, uh, that was, it was very sensitive. It was very, um, there was a lot of emotion in the room. And, uh, but it, it was good to get those things out on the table. I felt so. So, and this, I mentioned what I'm doing this week. Uh, I'm taking Friday off. I'm doing some work on Thursday this week. So that's my, that's my schedule.
Chair Harrington, I can go next. Um, and before I do, did, oh, time is still running. I get the extra minute to ask the question.
Thirty-seven seconds for.
Uh, Chair Harrington, uh, will there be an opportunity to go back to the consent agenda item review?
No.
Okay. So I'll raise it when we're on the dais. Okay. Thank you. Um, in terms of my update, um, all of last week I was pretty much sick. And when I was feeling better and not sick, I participated as a speaker in a town hall meeting with both Congresswoman Bonamici and Salinas and Central Cultural on Immigration. And I recommend, um, this Board to get involved in any opportunity there is about that conversation. And.
I thought that was before I left that you participated in the press conference with Central.
No, I said town hall meeting.
Okay. So that was different.
At the press conference, this was a town hall that happened last week.
Okay.
And then the, the other thing I would like to highlight here, it's something that I've been reflecting on, especially given how often I'm invited into classrooms and how often students interview me for class projects or, uh, just how often I get invited to student events. And I find that many students connect with me directly, which is something I truly value. Uh, but I've also noticed that schools and students in Washington County might not, um, always know, how to engage more broadly with the county. So question here is, and I apologize, my cough. Um, so my question is, when, uh, are we as Washington County going to step more fully into a leadership role in shaping the future workforce, particularly through creating intentional platforms for youth engagement like internship? And just so we're clear, uh, of course I personally value and, uh, I believe in the value of paid internship because that's one way we ensure these opportunities are accessible to all students, including students that are from low income backgrounds. But more broadly, how do we create, and this perhaps is a question to you, Tanya. Uh, and, uh, something to take back to the leadership is how do we create a robust structure pipeline for youth and students meaningfully connect with the county government and build career pathways here? Something to reflect back. I know, um, I, I think I'd like to see our county get on that path forward. Um, and, and, um, the other, other update that I like to give is I too had a great meeting with our Director, CEO for Clean Water Services, uh, Rick, and you're officially here, Rick. You're officially, uh, leading the charge since this was my first meeting with you here. And I really appreciated, we had a really robust discussion about all the goings-ons in, in Clean Water Services. And I want you to, uh, personally thank you for staying extra. I think we had a really long meeting. Uh, but there was a lot to discuss and to go over and I appreciate the opportunity and a welcome aboard and look forward to our every other week check-ins.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, I'll go next. Uh, Hi. I have two things to report out on. I attended the first hour by phone of the Acre meeting last night. I'm hoping that there were some other Washington County staff that were on the phone with that because there are some unfortunate audio problems with that opportunity. Couple of other observations there. I'm not quite sure how members of the public get into the building and into the room for that meeting. When I departed somewhere between five-thirty and six, I was the one that let Ana Diana into the building. I was really glad that I happened along when she was struggling to get into the building. The, I will continue to attend to the best of my availability, those meetings, because of the information that I learn and have access to as a result of being on this board. For example, I learned last night that our staff have invested in a community opinion survey on COVID recovery and accessibility of our services. It's funded by ARPA and will be implemented by D H M Research to a field of approximately eight hundred and, eight hundred community members. I didn't hear, and I still have questions about why we're doing this, how it relates to our ARPA framework. I don't see how it follows that and how it's pertinent to our work here in 2025 and beyond. But I look forward to hearing more about that. So onward ho we go. And the schedule of that is it will be out in the field in the early fall with data expected by the end of the calendar year. And it will be available in twelve different languages. So onward ho, we'll learn more. The one meeting I did take while I was out last week on family members was the Tri-County Chair Meeting, because it was the first time we've had one in a few months. Chair Robert shared that they had a very productive retreat with the county board. They had hired a consultant management for results to help them work on their strategic plan with goals and objectives. That consultant had worked with Blackamis County Mayors and partners in the community. They also brought in Mark Weiner to speak to regional polling. Loma County is going through a process now with their budget, given that the state ledge session is over. And now they need to go through and do a rebalance of their budget through the departments because of the impact, for example, on probation and parole officers, Health and Human Services. And then that is on top of the reduction of S H S revenue. So they're expecting that it will take them through September to get into that. I shared the work that we had done on the Access and Opportunity work. And then we shifted our focus over to Metro and the S H S work. I don't know about you all, but I'm really unclear as to what's happening there. J V P mentioned that she's met directly with three of the Metro councilors so far, and they seem to all be in different places. It would be good for us as three counties to get together and share our thoughts on governance and the key performance indicators. And she was advocating that all three counties should be able to have the vote to approve or not the K P Is. Apparently, Metro seems to be moving forward. Metro Council with an ordinance on governance changes, fully expecting that we're going to just sign on to new I G As. And I don't see how that happens. You know, you can't go with a presumptive close. Our current I G A stand until we sign something new. So Multnomah County is concerned about the Metro Council proposal to distribute money to the cities because of the concern that City of Portland, Portland will suck up all the money. So, yeah, we'll see what happens. Then we talked a little bit about tourism and how international travel for our area is down by at least six percent. Canadian travelers even more. I had the opportunity to learn more of that when I was back in New England and their Canadian travel, just for the summer season alone, is down twenty percent. And, yeah, it's really bad. So. Is ours up? Going to Canada?
The reverse.
All I can say is my husband was just there for a week in July. So we also talked about the Penepin case and it, I don't know if that's something that Alex at your county councils conference you talked about. But the three chairs are interested in understanding what, just having a sense of the county liability, both in a dollar's gross estimate as well as the number of properties. We don't know if there's something common there or if it's, if it's a mixed bag.
We can certainly get you something from Washington County's.
Yeah. And then another thing that Chair Vega Peterson mentioned was the most recent, well, every day's different, I guess. But there was a recent President Trump executive order on homelessness. And there seems to be a, a relationship to the preschool promise program there. So I don't know if that is just conjecture or whatnot, but I figured I'd better mention it. So, oh, I'm sorry, I've gone over time. Sorry about that. So, anyway, welcome to the month of August. We have more on our plate than we have staff time or money to support, but onward ho we go. So unless there's anything else on leadership communication, we can pause and then convene in our meetings promptly at ten. Great, thank you. We'll see you back here somewhere around eleven o'clock or so for an executive session on Clean Water Services. Then after the lunch break, we'll reconvene with two more big topics this afternoon. Thank you.